Can the meeting come to order? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor say aye. Okay, next we need a motion to approve the minutes of the June 9, 2015 board meeting.
Make a motion.
The motion is second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye. Post. Okay, next is recognition. Mr. Carter, KTN drawing card.
I'd like to recognize students from Elton Ave Elementary who had their artwork published in the Kingsport Times News drawing card. Chloe Bloodsaw, age seven. Autumn Bowen, age seven. Gracie Dillman, age seven. Madison Galloway, age seven. Virgil Hobbs, age seven. Kenley Johnson, six. Cameron Mosley, age seven. Jade Parsons, age seven. Taryn Oakley, age seven. And Peyton Williams, age seven. So congratulations to those students for having their artwork published in the Kingsport Times News.
Okay, next is schools with highest percentage of attendance, Mr. Carter.
For the month of June, St. Charles Elementary had the highest percentage of attendance with ninety-four point eight percent. Jonesville Middle School came in second for ninety, with ninety-one point five percent. For the year, Jonesville Middle School came in first at ninety-five point nineteen percent attendance. And St. Charles Elementary came in second with ninety-four point twenty-five percent. So congratulations to Jonesville Middle for being the winner for the year and St. Charles Elementary for coming in second for the year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Next is public expression. Do we have anyone for public expression? Okay, moving on to reports. First is the countywide in-service, August 19th. Mr. Carter.
Just like to let everyone know that our countywide in-service is scheduled for August 19th and certainly like to invite our board members to be there for that in-service.
Okay, next is the contract with Pussenberg for Lee High School gymnasium area. Mr. Carter.
You have in your packet a copy of the contract with Pussenberg for replacing the gym floor at Lee High School. They did actually start on that yesterday, started turning the floor out and hopefully will be completed by the time school starts on August 20th.
Okay, the Masonic Dictionary Project, Gift of Knowledge, Mr. Carter.
Received a letter from Thomas Ellis with Miles Lodge and they developed a Masonic Dictionary Project called the Gift of Knowledge last year. This project is designed to aid third grade teachers in their goal to create confident writers, active readers, and creative thinkers. The purpose is to provide the third grade students in our county with their own personal dictionaries to help accomplish this goal. The Miles Lodge, of course, started raising funds at the beginning of this year in 2015 in order to purchase the dictionaries for the start of school this fall. The other five lodges in the county are once again in full support of this project and they hope to present to the school board at the October 2015 meeting. So we'd like to certainly thank them. Last year was the first year for that project and they plan to do it again. I think it was a big success and certainly a big hit with their third graders and their
Okay, the community eligibility provision report is next, Ms. Daughery.
Mr. Carter, board members, just to make you aware, and I'm sure that you are, that we have applied community eligibility for the elementary schools. Some other schools were eligible, however, we felt by grouping these that would best benefit the district, so we have applied and are awaiting approval for our DOE. So we should know something probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, next is the Virginia Department of Education, pilot virtual Virginia Full-Time High School. Mr. Carter.
Virginia Department of Education has issued a news release that they plan to implement a virtual Virginia high school program, pilot this program. It's actually be an online high school for the 2015-16 school year. The pilot's available up to 100 students on a first-come, first-served basis and they'll offer all the courses, core courses, as well as the electives that a student will need in order to earn a standard or an advanced diploma. And students enrolled in this program will actually be enrolled in the local public high school and their division and then receive their instruction through the virtual Virginia program. Of course, students that are interested have to be enrolled as a student in the school system in order to qualify for this and would need to contact the guidance counselor at the local high school in order to participate.
Just a quick question. Do you know when the enrollment opens or anything?
I do not. They've just released, of course, this in June and I'm not sure exactly when the enrollment will open, but the high school guidance counselor should have access to that.
Another question?
Is there any concern about eligibility when they're virtual, if they want to participate in athletics?
If they're actually, if they're in the virtual program, they're considered one of our students.
Okay, what if that, are they considered a student at the high school, they first attended?
Well, they have to be enrolled as a student at one of the high schools. Like, they would be enrolled either in Lee High or Thomas Walker. They do have to be enrolled in one of the high schools. And if they participated in the sports program, they'd have to be at that school, so depending on which one. Of course, this year it's just a pilot project and they're only accepting 100 students and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, so, but I do expect that this is just the
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Carter, the enrollment.
The enrollment for the end of June is 3,096 students. That's down two students from the same period last month, of the month of May. It's also down 76 students from this same period last year.
Okay, next is the financial report, Ms. Lemon.
Good evening. This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of June. We received revenues totaling $8,556,134.45. As of June 30th, we have received 98.11% of our estimated revenues for the year. Our expenditures for the month of June, general fund payroll and accounts payable totaled Keep in mind that is two payrolls, June 1 and June 30th. Title 1 payroll and accounts payable totaled $292,342.86. Head start payrolls, $173,573.52. And insurance payments totaled $344,074.41. Were total expenditures of $7,27,128.35. As of June 30th, we had used 91.21% of our appropriations for the year. Our post-year payrolls for August and September totaled $3,217,876.97. And after those were computed, we had used 99.19% of our appropriations for the year.
Okay, next is the action agenda items. Consider approval of student wellness policy, Ms. Daughery.
The only changes that see the policy are qualifications for school cafeteria staff, and that's on later T. Also professional development hours that are required for USDA.
Any question? Mr. Twitt, did you?
Oh, no, I was just thinking, I was just concerned about section R, about the use of the facilities. And I assume that if they need to use the facility on the weekend or something like that, or part of the wellness program, they can, I guess, go through the proper procedure to make the building available. Just make sure, you know, who's going to be liable if something happens to the building, somebody else is using it, who's going to be responsible?
We do have that last statement there that Lee County School Board policies apply, so to get the building, they would have to. You might want to put a parentheses though, to see the policy or whatever. Okay, you want policy number added in there? Or wherever, you know, they could see. If I can do that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, you have the next one, Ms. Daughery, the school nutrition plan?
Well, it has a plan.
We have to have that voted on, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion to approve the student wellness policy?
I make a motion to approve it with the addition that she had there.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye. Post. The motion passes. Okay, next is the school nutrition.
It has a plan, it is handling procedures that, again, are through USDA. No changes in that for this year, this needs to be approved this year with school nutrition
Make a motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Okay, next is the revision to the 2015-2016 meal prices, Ms. Daughery.
We had some mid prices last board meeting, but as of July 1st, the increase had changed from 55 to 65 cents difference, so the only change from last month to this month on the adult meal prices from 275 to 285.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye. Post. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Daughery.
She's still, I'm about to sit one more.
Sorry. Okay, middle school math prerequisites.
We have met with both principals and representatives from math departments at both schools. As far as the prerequisites for Algebra I, we'd like to recommend that students must score a 475 or greater and have a 90 in the class in seventh grade math to take the pre-algebra. Also, if they come in at sixth and seventh grade with a 425 or lower, they'll be in a math foundations class. The problem that we've been having is that algebra has been open to all students. Of course, parents want, most parents want their students in Algebra I at the eighth grade level and many pass and many do not. It eventually catches up with them at the high school when they go to take the higher math layer. It doesn't always catch up at the middle school, but it does at the high school as far as skills that they're lacking. So we're asking that the prerequisites that you have there in your packet, as far as the 475, 90 and above, in the seventh grade math, that all students will take sixth and seventh grade in seventh grade math and need 475 to be considered for Algebra I at the eighth grade level with a score of 90 in the class. When coming into the sixth grade, 425 or less will be in a math foundations and the same at the seventh and eighth grade if they score 425 or less to get that extra block of the math.
And as Ms. Daughery said, we have met with the middle school principals, with the guidance counselors, and at least one math teacher from each middle school who attended the meeting, and that this is their actual recommendations.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion, we approve it if it's enforced.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Now, you can sit down, Ms. Daughery. Thank you. Okay, next is to consider approval of combining middle school football programs. Mr. Hartman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like this board to approve the combining of Johnson Middle and Pennington Middle football squads due to the number of participants at Johnson Middle being in under the recommended number to fill the football team. And we have talked with the, one of the ADs at Lee High School who is willing to take this under advisement, and we've talked to the coaches at Pennington, and they have the uniforms and the equipment to combine those squads. We have kicked this around for a number of years. We already have these two schools combined and other athletic programs, so due to the numbers at Johnson, in order for those kids to have a chance to play football, I would like to make a motion that we combine those two programs, those two schools.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Post.
Could I add one thing to that, Ms. Daughery? No, I can't to the motion, but the athletic directors already have this well in hand. Can we just give them permission to go ahead and handle this situation?
I think we just did it.
Okay, next is consider approval of a copy of the contract, Mr. Carter.
We have proposals from two different companies for our copiers for the next 48 months. This is actually a 48-month lease from Hungate and John Coe, and we would have unlimited copies with John Coe cartridges and service. Staples will be charged to the individual school with, and they would provide 29 machines for our division. Hungate would be providing 18, and they do have a limit on the number of copies, and once we go over that, we have to pay for it. Hungate does have unlimited service and unlimited cartridges and staples, but when you compare the price and the number of machines that we would receive with John Coe, I would recommend that we go with John Coe for the lease for the next 48 months for our copiers for schools and central office.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve John Coe for the copy of the contract?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Okay, next, we need a motion to rescind the naming of the Thomas Walker baseball and softball field. I'll make that motion. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Post. Motion carries. Next is consider approval to apply for the 2015-2016 school security equipment. Mr. Carter.
The Virginia Public School Authority closed on the issuance of $6 million in notes to fund the school security grants for the 2015-16 school year, and those grants will be awarded, as they have in the past, on a competitive basis, and school divisions are eligible to receive grants up to $200,000, and these have to be turned in by August 1. And of course, they will hopefully notify us as soon as all the grants are in, and sometimes we end up, I mean, a little later than what we hoped to get notified, but we would just like to ask the board for approval to apply for the security grants for Lee County Schools.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Post. Next is consider approval of the Virginia School Board Association policy updates. Ms. Adams.
Good evening. You received a packet last month for the review for the July meeting. And in looking at these policies, nothing has changed except the two that we have a question about. Most of them, it is update, revise, or reflect, et cetera. But looking at policy VB, VB, which is the first one, student representative to the school board. I went back and I have searched our policy and we do not have that at this time. So it looks as if it has been presented before, but it is an optional policy. So you might want to look at that one to see if you want to make it optional and not include it or keep. That is having a representative to the board. The principal of each high school nominates two students from the school to serve as student representative to the school board. From these nominations, the superintendent selects the student representative subject to file approval of the school board. The student representative serves a one-year term, and it's on. And they are to serve in an advisory capacity with no vote. They shall attend, they shall not attend closed meetings. The school division provides the meeting agenda and other public materials to the student in advance of each open meeting. The student representative does not have access to confidential information, including student or personnel records. The student representative is expected to attend all regular open meetings and complete assignments for research and data collection when requested by the school board.
Okay, any questions, recommendations?
I've got a couple of questions, Ms. Adams. Policy GVR. G, that's the voluntary retirement savings program. Is that, is that a program that we offer through VRS or is that through other companies in general?
It's a policy that's being updated, and I'd have to go look at what we have now.
Because I'll, I'll.
I gave you the red line, but I think I have a copy.
I'll pin that, that policy didn't ring a bell with me is one reason.
GAR.
One reason I'm asking, and probably this other one also, is GEA slash JOH, and that's about the electronic signatures.
We've had that before.
And do we do electronic signatures and things?
We do not.
What did you say that was, GA?
GBR was the first one I read.
And of course, this is the red line, which shows the strikeout and what has been added.
I mean, we, I've got a copy.
Oh, okay.
In the, as I say, the policy wasn't ringing a bell with me.
Okay, so another one you wanted?
And that was about the electronic signatures, and it's an optional policy anyway, so.
Usually it's optional one and one and two.
No, I just said optional, so I'm assuming we don't use it then.
Then the other policy is GAD, which is just the new policy, and it's access to employee social media accounts, and it's a new policy. But the one I had concern about was your student representative to the school board if you wanted to adopt that policy.
Okay, we need a motion then to approve the policy updates without any options. Just presenting.
Without any options?
Well, I would think we'd want to approve those in a later day. If there's some questions also.
Yeah, I'll make a motion without any options.
Second. Okay, do we have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Post.
Just so I understand that, we're not doing that?
VB.
For B1. Also, you know, that doesn't include option one or option two when it, because you would have to choose option one or option two, and sometimes that's a regional, relating to the regional, and we always choose option one. Just making sure that we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, consider approval of post-year categorical transfers, Mr. Carter and Ms. Lemon.
I'll place the categorical transfer in the supplemental appropriation request at your seat before the meeting. We are asking for categorical budget transfer from the board of supervisors since our budget was appropriated categorically. We had two categories which exceeded the appropriation. One was food service because we had more in transfers to the schools than, or to the federal reimbursements to the schools than we had budgeted, but we also had revenue to offset that. And our insurance category, we had 79,000 more in claims than what we had budgeted, but we do have the appropriation and instruction to cover that, and it is just an appropriation
Okay, any questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the post-year categorical transfer?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Post. Okay, next is consider approval of supplemental appropriations for the VACO reinsurance settlements. Ms. Lemon.
Yes, we received a total of $273,334 from VACO insurance for claims from the hail damage last year on roofs, and I'm just drawing a blank on what the second project is. Can you bail me out, Mr. Carter? The hail damage and the floor at Lee High.
Lee High School, right, right.
And that was the building, the gym floor at Lee High. We've received checks totaling $273,000 from VACO, so we will be responsible for paying the contractors for those repairs, and since it's this sum of money, we need a supplemental appropriation for facilities category.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. Have a second?
Second.
The motion, second, all in favor say aye. Ms. Lemon, you have a connection. Consider approval of amended school budget and salary scales.
In the packet, you have a copy of the amended school budget for 2015-16. I amend that was necessary because we asked for, we asked the board of supervisors for 1.2 million above what they had to fund us, and they did fund us with level funding from last year, but that meant we had to cut a little over a million dollars from the presented budget. So this is what you have in your packet. We also have a categorical budget because that's how they requested that we present it, and salary scales are in that packet as well.
Okay, any questions? Concerned? Okay, a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, all in favor say aye. Okay, before we go to the next, I would like to, I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, thank the board of supervisors for doing level funding this year so we could give our support staff the raise that wasn't covered by the state for the teachers, so thank them for that. And next is the consider approval of payment of bills.
We have questions if anyone has.
You may want to pay the bills? Have a motion.
I made it. I, I made it.
I can't hear in my left ear.
Sorry. I make the motion to pay.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is reinforcing recommendations of the board, Mr. Louise?
Yes, I've got a couple of things I want to mention. One, several people have talked to me about this, including, uh, Alan Pennington. I spoke up one time during the year about, um, a whole school taking off the day after they'd been out of school for 16 days and going to a movie at Lee Theater, and, um, I worked with them at Lee Theater, so they talked to me about it, and I said, "I have no problem with you taking them to Lee Theater. I have a problem with what time it was, and I have a great problem with what the movie was. I just hate to see where the movie that was seen at that time, uh, had anything at all to do with the school system." But if they want to do it at the end of school, near the end of school, I'm all for that. I don't, don't have any problem, and they know very much at Lee Theater that I'm there with them. Another thing I want to mention is that, I've searched so many good teachers in Lee County that I, I don't know where to start to count them. But it's always the bad ones, or the ones that's not willing to do their share, that gives all of us a bad name. We voted in to have exams a couple of years ago, and, uh, it's either, it's become a joke with an awful lot of teachers. I went through a lot of the exams, and some of them, the exam was, uh, "What is your name?", that was one exam. It's a two-hour exam, by the way, that was supposed to be given. Another exam had on it, I gave one oral question, that was it. And, uh, things right like this, I think we either ought to put exams in or take them out, one of the two. That's not fair to the teachers who are doing their job and doing a two-hour exam on these kids, to have other teachers sit there. And I even had one teacher who didn't have one in tell me that they didn't cover anything that could be, uh, that they could test on, so. I have a real question whether that teacher needs to be paid or not, if they didn't cover anything to have a test on. So, don't need a vote or anything, I just think we need to put some teeth in with that as it goes along. And like I said, it's not most teachers, it's a few.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo what you said about the board supervisors. I too would, uh, like to show my appreciation to them for, uh, letting us hire some teachers back that we, we needed and they needed us, so I appreciate them, uh, going to that end to allow us to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr., uh, Jess?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams, and there are so many others. Oh, I'll just say the, the staff and the friends of Driven Elementary School who participated in the, the fundraising event on June 28th, and also I'd like to thank the, uh, board of supervisors for providing the money for the, the raise. I just wish they could have come forward with a little bit more to make sure we could keep most of their teachers.
Hey, Mr. Twigg?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the, uh, board supervisors for their support, and, um, also, Mr. Carter, I'd like to, um, if we can remind the, the maintenance, you know, we've had that problem at Lee High twice, and maybe we ought to take some precautionary members in our plumbing, you know, going into those, uh, downstairs, uh, restrooms and so forth, and considering, you know, it has been in the same area twice, so, maybe while we're getting the gym floor redone, have maintenance look into that, and, um, if anybody wants to donate some money for some buses, we sure could use it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And next we need a motion to go to executive session, Mr. Hartman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we go to executive session, consider personnel section 2.2 dash 3711A1, the code of Virginia to discuss personnel.
Okay, Ellen, have a second?
Second.
Motion's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.